I'm just waiting for the 7:30 bell. Oh, there we go. Okay. Everybody here, we ready?
You have a full, you have a full board tonight. And Lenora is here as your alternate.
Okay. We don't have, um, all right. Well, welcome everybody to Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission for Tuesday, September 21st. I'm sorry, September 28th, 2021. Things are popping up on my computer. Um, we'll call the meeting to order. Um, so we have a full board. Is Suzanne here? Yeah. Okay, so we'll start out with John. Go ahead, John.
John Smolgin.
Rob Horgan.
Sue.
Andy Engle.
Lenora.
Lenora Palatnik.
Um, so we have a quorum. Lenora will be the alternate. Um, but we have four um, regular members plus myself. I'm Russ Dorengo. I chair the commission. Uh, communications with the public.
I'm here.
Well, anybody out from the public have anything to, uh, we, we have this on the agenda for the public to come to us and say whatever concerns they may have about wetlands or the commission. Nobody? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 24th, 2021.
They're moved.
Russ, I have, um, it had me at the meeting and I wasn't there.
Yeah, so you were, you would abstain.
But it listed me in the minutes.
Okay, well, that's a good one to let, uh, Julie know that, take that out.
I can, I can amend that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sue, are you sure you weren't there?
Actually, I had to double check my calendar. Okay.
For some reason, I thought you called in from work.
Nothing looked familiar, so I said, no, I know I'm not losing my mind. I wasn't there.
Well, I've been doing that, so. All right, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? So Suzanne, you would, um, say now that you weren't there.
Okay. Oh, and I wasn't, I did not attend the meeting.
Okay. With that change, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. So what's next? I, I don't see the agenda anymore.
There it is, it's back. Um, let's see. Hold on.
All right, new business. There's no old business. That's a good thing.
Old business.
So I need the agenda.
So this is the first application.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's, um, I can't read it. Fisher?
Fyscher.
Fyscher Heaton, 67 Battle Swamp Road. Remove existing garage and pool house. Construct new porch on main house, garage and pool house. Okay. So who's here to talk about this application? Nobody?
I did see Louis Heaton here. Let me double check if he's still on.
Yeah, he is there. He's muted. There you are, Lou.
You're not hearing, I'm trying to.
There you are, Lou.
This is not my everyday thing. I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's not ours either, but we're forced to do it.
No, we are, uh, looking to construct a screen porch on the side of the existing house. Um, we went through zoning and got our approvals there because it was, uh, non-conforming, but that's all been done. Uh, we have an existing garage, which is pretty depilitated and a very small pool house that is same thing, very depilitated. We want to remove the both and put a new, new one that's conforming. The garage was non-conforming, the existing. And we'd like to make everything more conforming and just, if you look at the layout of everything, it's more in a straight line. It fits the property and I think it'll increase the, you know, the value of the road, everything. It just looks better. That's, and this is what he wanted and I'm here to, uh, show you what he wants.
All right, um, could we zoom in on that?
Yes.
Are there any wetlands? Seems like there's all wet.
Way down below, but not, not in, not in, we're not doing anything in the wetlands. No, we have a pond that's far enough away and.
How about the buffer zone, the 100 feet from it?
Yes, we are over 100 feet. Yes.
You're over, you're over 100 feet, so you're really.
Yep.
All right. Um, yeah, I see that. Anybody have any comments on this? Are we worried about roof drainage? They're not really expanding much. They're basically adding a small addition, doing a redoing a pool house, right Lou?
Correct.
So there shouldn't be a lot more roof drainage than what is there now?
No, there is, you know, the garage is slightly bigger, but when you put everything together, you know, we have drains that go everywhere. Everything is be done properly. I don't, we, according to engineer and everybody I talked to, everything seemed to work out perfect.
Any questions from the commission? And Lenora, you could ask questions.
So I can't really see this map. Um, you know, the shaded areas of the new construction, I can't, I can't really read.
Correct. Yes, correct. The shaded areas of new construction.
Uh, Julie, could you scroll down just a, a little bit?
Yeah, and then zoom, zoom one more.
And, and then maybe to the left?
All right, so you want me?
Cause there's, is that a new driveway that's going in?
Yes.
Okay. Is there driveway drainage?
Um, the way this property, everything goes away and there's a bunch of woods on the side and it should dissipate. You know, when I had them draw it, that's.
Yeah, everybody says that and then we get complaints. You gotta have a driveway drainage plan. You have to.
And, and actually the, the roof drainage, it looks quite large to me. Like how many square feet is that roof area?
Um, I don't have the application in front of me. I'm not sure. I cannot tell you exactly.
Well, do you know around? Uh, 2,000, 3,000?
Yeah, no, I would say 2,000 square feet.
So it's like a new house for, for a regular person.
Yeah.
Sorry.
If I were a regular, I wouldn't have a job.
It's the size of my house.
I, uh, I said, I'm, I'm the messenger.
All right, well, we're gonna, um, go out and look at it.
Beautiful.
I'd like to go out with, uh, anybody who wants to go with me?
I'll go with you, Russ.
All right, and, um, for the next meeting, Lou, would do your client a, a big favor so we could look at it and then end it. Because we need a driveway drainage plan and then a roof drainage plan. We do require an hour days that the roof drainage go to underground infiltration systems.
Gotcha.
We do allow a waiver of drainages because we don't want to cause any problems. There's a lot of drainage problems on Battle Swamp Road. We don't want to add to it. So it's basically, you can't increase the amount of runoff that's going off the site now. Naturally.
Yep.
All right.
No problem. No, we'll, we'll take care of that and have that all ready and I'll submit it in the next, you know, soon as I can get it done, bring it into John and.
Now, do we need to notify somebody to go there or could we just go there and look or do you need an email?
Usually there, no, and it's very open property. He's not gonna, there's no dogs, just, you know, you want to go walk and look around. I'll let him know you're gonna be there. And it shouldn't be a problem. You know, it's either me there, there's a, you know, Nancy inside, a caretaker. You want to come out and just ask where you are, that's all. But no.
We, we, we like dogs.
Yeah, no, there's no dog. I'm just saying, there's nothing there. It's, like I said, anytime, anytime. It really doesn't.
Oh, then in a bear. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. Thank you, Lou. We'll move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Okay, just bear with me a minute. We have to flip this around.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that with my screen. It's not working.
I know. So let me see, I think that will get us in the right, maybe not. Nope, one more.
Take your time.
There we go. Make this a little bit smaller.
I can't read the name because the writing's very.
It's Academy Designs, um, is the applicant, 61 dash A Butterfield Road LLC. And Ben Pilchard is here.
Right, and.
Represent them.
This for Four Painter Ridge Road.
Yes.
Ben, you're on.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So, um, what, what, uh, thank you for all, uh, taking the time to review, uh, my application. Um, the, the, uh, what, what I'd like to do, the, the house, uh, my understanding is that, that the house was, uh, rented for several years. So there's some deferred maintenance, um, on the lawn. In other words, the lawn has kind of uh, just been overgrown and not, not cut. So I'd like to try to restore the yard, uh, um, basically to the uh, right or south side of the driveway. Um, and everything that's kind of, uh, in, in the green with the, uh, the dashed lines.
Julie, could you zoom it one more?
Yes.
So this is in the regulated area, right? Within 100 feet of what? A stream?
There's a, there's a pond, there's a pond there.
I see the pond and is there a stream in front of it?
N- no. No, that's a hill.
It's a contour line, right. Always best to make them black so we blue means water to us.
Okay.
Um, so the pond is that round shape there?
Uh, there's a.
Left corner?
That's correct.
Oh, that pond, okay.
That's correct.
But there's no other pond in the back?
No.
Okay.
No, uh, there is not.
Uh, Russ, can I explain why I sent this to the commission?
Well, you should. It's a regulated activity.
Um, just because I did the sidewalk with Ben, we talked about the proposal, what he wanted to do there. Um, it's not bad, but the terrain does concern me about possible impact to the lower wetlands area. Um, a lot of tree clearing, some soil is going to be regraded and stuff like that. And just because of the proximity of the pond and all that, I certainly didn't want to own this one. I feel it'd be better if the commission went gave its blessing.
Right, and for the commission, as you could read a map, uh, the contours are 1020, 1010, 1,000 feet is in red. So it's all sloping down towards the pond. But there's also in this application driveway to be removed. Am I wrong or is this an old map where this was all done?
No, no, this is, that's what I'm proposing.
Right. Driveway to be removed. Proposed garage 24 by 24. Proposed, I can't read it in orange, proposed drive. Okay, so you're gonna put in a whole new driveway?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not putting in a whole new driveway, just.
There, it's there.
The driveway is, that's correct. The driveway is there. It's just, uh, the, the, the top, uh, the top of the driveway, uh, I was, uh, I wanted to put in a small turnaround which is in orange at the top of the driveway.
I see it and get rid of the rest of it.
And then.
Put a garage in.
And put a, yes, and put a parking.
So they could walk into the house from the garage instead of driving all the way around and then walking in the front door.
Yeah, there's, oh, so there's a, there's an alternate locate, so the one location is, um, attached to the house. And then there's an alternate location, uh, detached from the house.
Right, okay.
But it would be one or the other, uh, uh, location.
Okay. And you're saying this used to be lawn area. It's all full of evasives and stuff right now.
Um, the, what I would say on, on the, on the, um, right side of the driveway, as you're looking at, at this, uh, that is just basically there's some grass and there are just some very low weeds. It's very wide open to the, to the left above the, see the septic system?
Yeah.
Above that, there, there is, um, some overgrown, uh, weeds and some invasive weeds there that I would like to remove.
But that's not on this plan, right? If it's just above the septic?
Yeah, just above the septic. Yeah.
So it's not on this plan where?
Yeah, I think it, it's, what, what Michael Alex did is he kind of included it in the, the lawn kind of reclamation. So you see on the left side of the driveway going up, there's kind of a shoulder area there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's identified graphically the same way as on the right side of the driveway. So it's right in that area.
All right.
So I, I have a question. The, the proposed garage, that's where you want to put it?
That's where I would like to put it, in, in.
Attached to the house?
In one of those locations. I just don't, I, uh, to be honest with you, I hadn't, I had not made up my mind yet which location.
Okay, but if you put it in the proposed garage location, not the alternate location?
Yes.
The driveway goes right through the corner of that garage.
Yeah, I was looking at that too, yeah.
So the driveway would have to be relocated?
It would have to turn to the garage, yes.
Okay.
More, more than likely, I'm, I'm going to put it, um, detached in the alternate location.
All right, I think, uh, any other questions?
The goal really was just to present to you guys, you know, as much information as I could so you could see what, what the options were. And I don't, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, uh, yeah, okay, so did, are there any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions from the commission?
Well, well, just a comment here. I think, um, we should see a finalized plan before we, we move forward on it.
Right. Uh, and we need to go look at it.
Yeah.
Right, and then.
A finalized, a finalized plan in terms of, uh, just identifying which, which location would be the, the garage.
Well, is this a survey, Ben?
Yes, it is. It's an A2 survey.
All right, it's just got a lot of colors on it, okay. Um, but how can A2 survey have a proposed garage in the driveway?
So I can how can it?
How can a proposed garage have a corner of it?
We could, we could eliminate the garage next to the house.
No, I don't care. I mean. How do, how do you get in it? What, what is it? I mean, drive up the driveway, back up, turn, you know.
Oh, you go, there's a, there's a turnaround at the top of the driveway.
So you're gonna turn around and then go in it? Okay.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to look at this, Ben?
Sure.
So you need to stake out the corners of that lawn. Uh, the corners of the two proposed garage and where the, where the turnaround's gonna be.
Let me just grab, I, I need to, uh, stake out the, can you repeat that, please?
The four corners of the proposed lawn area.
Okay.
Proposed corners of the alternate garage and the proposed garage. And then where the turnaround area, stake in the middle of it would be fine.
Um, one other question. I see a proposed silt fence down by the road.
Yes.
Is that a new septic going in right there?
No, that, that septic system is installed already. That's an existing system.
So why have a silt fence down there? There's no activity, right?
Uh, no, the, the only activity there, that, that, that is dirt. That is dirt. There is no ground cover on that. So I just wanted to plant some grass there.
Right, but, okay, so you're gonna put up a silt fence, but you need erosion control on the downside of that new lawn area and all the activity up top. You need hay bales or silt fence or something that, in other words, uh, from the corner of your lawn all the way to, to the driveway.
Okay.
Cause you do have a slope. We'll, we'll understand the steepness when we go look at it. Um, that's it, Ben. I mean, basically we need to go look at it and chat again.
Is it possible for me to meet you out there to answer any?
It's absolutely. It's your property. We can't just go tromping on it. A lot of times we do ask people to let us just go on our own, um, because that way we don't have to set up times and all of us are busy. You know, this is volunteer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it doesn't, it's not helpful for us to meet you on site because based on the regulations, we can't really discuss every, anything on site. We have to, uh, do that all during a meeting so that there's public openness.
Mm-hmm, sure.
But if you want to be on site, absolutely, you're right. And if you give Karen or Julie your email or some way where I could contact you, which is probably on the application, with them, we'll contact you and set up a day and a time.
Okay, um, okay, and is there any activity that can occur, um, in this lot, uh, in the meantime?
No. Uh, I mean, if you're redoing things in the house, obviously that's not a wetland issue. Back to another meeting to amend it.
Oh, 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 okay. You mean a third meeting or, or?
No, it's a whole new, uh, submit it, wait till the meeting, tell us why you want to amend it.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
Okay, that's just, that's just a question.
It's in your, it's in your best interest to have a plan you believe in. Don't design that plan based on what you think we think. We're, we're interested in protecting wetlands, but we, we do respect property owner rights. We're not here to deny at all. We're here to help you do what you want to do while protecting the wetlands.
And, and, um, so what's the process at this point now? Um, so.
Well, we, we come out, we look at it and then we meet next month and talk about what we saw. Which we can't talk about during the site meeting. That's, even, even the two commissioners who go out really can't discuss things. It's supposed to go look. We could ask questions if you're there and you, you can answer, but those questions have to be asked during a meeting too.
Okay.
Russ, I've got a question. Um, I thought I heard Mr. Pilchard say that there was some exposed dirt down by the septic system, uncovered, uh, ground. Did I hear correctly?
Yes, you did.
Um, was what you were concerned about doing, getting some grass seed and some mulch on that to keep it from eroding while it's still in the growing season?
That's, that's correct. Yeah.
Yeah, good point, Andy. That you could go ahead and do.
Right, thank you. A lot of the.
Are you gonna do it with a machine or?
No, I don't need to do that with a machine. No, that's graded out.
Well, that you could go ahead and do. I, anybody on the commission opposed to that?
No, I, I was thinking the same thing too and, yeah.
Yeah, we're not here, I'm talking about the lawn and building buildings. We're not here to stop you from protecting that pond.
Yeah, so, I mean, so my, my question is, this area, this area on the, let's call it the right side of that driveway. Um, to me, at one point, that was all lawn. Is there a reason why I can't have a, um, a landscaper go in and cut it?
We need to look at it because if it's a lot of cutting, then under regulation, it needs to be part of this application. We need to look at it to understand.
Okay, so I'm, I, I guess what, what I'm, what I'm just, my, my, my last question really is, I'm, I'm trying to, um, you know, I have flexibility to do, you know, to, to, to reduce the amount of work here and, and, and keep it outside of the, outside of, um, the regulated area and possibly not even cut any of those trees. So if I chose not to cut any of those trees, except where the alternate driver, the alternate, um, garages, um, then, then, um, I, I still would have to come back to another meeting.
Well, you have an application in, so now you're in. Uh, you want to withdraw the application? That's fine. John, John Cody could approve things outside the buffer area, but he sounds not, uh, he's not really comfortable in doing that. So understand, our jurisdiction goes to the top of the watershed. Any potential impact of wetlands, no matter how far away, it is a regulated activity that could only be deemed such by the commission. So I suggest you keep this in, decide exactly what you want to do. And at the next meeting, after we do our sidewalk, we could talk about it. But right now, um, I could tell you want to get going, but it doesn't work that way. It's like.
I'm just, I, I guess, I'm, I am concerned about missing the window for, for growth. That's, that's.
Well, you know, a lot of people do that and it's not our fault. It's October and then, and, you know, should have been submitted sooner. Maybe things didn't work out that way.
Just.
But we can't, we, we have, these regulations are state regulations. They're administered by us and we're, we're under the jurisdiction of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. We don't have a lot of leeway in how this goes. We have to follow regulation. I hate saying it.
No, no, I, I, look, I, I, I totally understand, um, uh, I, I totally understand. I, I just, um, uh, just considering maybe I, I introduced a, 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 a plan that is, uh, you know, a, a bit more ambitious than it needs to be. That's.
Maybe not, but you could, you could do, you could submit a plan that doing what you need to do and then do the rest of it in the spring. But we're saying right now, go ahead and plant the grass by the septic. Don't have a problem with that, but it starts cutting trees across the driveway. We need to know. We, we've had this before where people said, I just want to cut a few trees. And then we see a whole clear cut and everybody freaks out on us.
It, I, I understand. I know you don't know who I am or what I've done in the past. Um, I have worked with.
I, I do know who you are, Ben. I think I've worked for you before, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but I may have the wrong Ben. Haven't you bought property up in Northwest Connecticut to preserve it?
No.
No, okay, you're the different guy.
No, no.
But regardless, Ben, we're tied, our, our hands are tied. I mean, we're a commission run by the state. We just administer state regulations. That's all.
Okay, so then, uh, is there a, is there a potential that this could be approved in the next meeting?
Yes, and we can't even approve at this meeting by the regulation. We have to allow 15 days for the public to decide if they want a public hearing or not.
Oh, no, I, that I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I have, uh, stake the corners of the lawn, um, stake the corners of the alternate garage, stake the corners of the proposed garage. And, um, uh, you want to have a, a siltation fence below the, uh, area where the, it would be clear cut.
Yeah, all the, all the activity, yeah.
Hey, hey, Russ, does he need to, uh, include, uh, garage roof drainage and driveway drainage with this plan?
Well, the driveway's in.
Well, he moves it. Okay.
Um, the, the proposed garage, no matter where it goes, the roof drainage should go into infiltrators underground, Ben. We, we don't allow, uh, unless you don't have any gutters. If you're not putting gutters on, then it's just gravel where the water's gonna go.
This is just gonna be a, a simple, i- i- in the, in the plan, uh, in the submission, um, it's, it is a garage that's put on top of gravel. It's a prefabricated garage.
So that there's no, there's no, uh, roof drain, there's no gutters?
No.
Right, okay. There's no gutters, then it's not a problem.
Okay. Okay.
When you're focusing water off a roof, we want it to go into the ground.
Okay. Very good.
All right, Ben, good luck.
All right.
We'll see you next meeting. Um, again, your, your information's on your application, so we'll contact you. If there's not an email on there, would you just let, uh, Julie or Karen know what your email is?
Uh, I believe there is an email on there.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
And, and so, uh, okay, well, thank you all for, for taking the time to, to listen. Um, and can I exit the meeting at this point?
Oh, yeah. You don't have to stay here and suffer.
Okay, all righty. All right, have a nice night. Thank you.
Hey, hey, Russ, who's walking that?
What?
Who's walking that site?
Me and you, I guess, or who wants to walk it?
I'll go.
You'll go, Andy?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, I haven't been on one in a while.
Yeah, Andy and John will do that.
Yeah, I'll go.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Alright, next.
Let me see, I believe it's Southworth, let me get down there.
Yeah, she, Brian, Brian F.'s here, he's trying to outlast me. Hi, Brian, you're muted. You're muted, Brian. Hi, Brian.
Here now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, Pam's not available to be at the meeting tonight, so she asked me to stand in for her. Which I've done some stuff in the past for her, for, um, basically the, the stream bed application. Um. In terms of the, of the, um, activity, she had a lot of damage that occurred during the last big storm that came through, Hurricane Ida. And quite a few of the rocks on the sides of the channel washed into the, the base of the channel.
Yeah, I heard the church, I heard the church bridge floated downstream. Is that true?
Uh, uh, no, I don't think that's happened.
Uh, or a board, I, that's, Sandra Quantrill called me and said the church bridge is in my backyard, but I think it was a board.
Yeah, just a piece of board, I think, went across there.
Yeah.
So this is upstream of the church, it's the same brook that goes through. You can see from the pictures, a lot of the rock has fallen into the channel from the water flow. Um, the last time this happened was dur- during Hurricane Sandy back in two thousand twelve. Exactly the same thing happened, where a lot of the rocks on the sides of the channel had washed into the middle of it. So she'd like to just basically, um, get all those rocks and put them back on the bank.
Yeah, could we put them back on the new bank that the stream carved?
Uh, yeah, those could be placed back against your bank, but.
Again, and, and against where it's eroded, like if you, I think it's a pitcher up one.
Do you want me to go down? Yeah.
Yeah, down, I mean, yeah, there, go up.
That one?
Yeah, could we put it where that erosion is and not put it back to where it was?
Well, yeah, it would go back.
It's in her interest, cause it widens the stream, and that's what the stream wants to do.
Right, she just put the, the rocks back against the bank, stabilize that, so wherever the cut's been made now, she just want to put the rocks back against the bank that's there now.
And they would do that by machine, right? Cause it doesn't look like you could lift them by hand.
Yeah, last time, uh, Chuck Miller brought his little excavator over, like a mini excavator, and he picked them up out of the.
That's the picture, right there, like, see that picture, Brian?
Yeah.
If they could put it up against the new bank and leave that, uh, cut alone, cause plants will grow in there and that. And the next flood, the stream's gonna be better than if you put the wall back to where it was, you're just.
Well, no, she's not, not talking about backfilling behind the rock, she's try, talking about putting the boulders back against the, the sides of the bank that are there right now. Not doing any, any excavating, not any filling, but just to put the rocks against the bank that's there now to stabilize it.
Alright, could she wait until the water comes down with all this rain?
Yeah, it's best to wait until things dry out a little bit more.
Alright.
So last time, after, uh, Hurricane Sandy, she had Chuck Miller come over, and she actually got a permit from, from the Wetlands Commission to do this. Uh, back in two thousand twelve, I did a little sketch for, just to put the rocks back on the sides, that's what she'd like to do this time.
Anybody have any questions? No? Um, do we want to approve this as a maintenance activity?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause, cause, um, I, I'll, well, according to Dennis McDonald, I'm not supposed to be making motions, so. Dale says it's fine, but.
I moved that we approve this as a maintenance activity.
Do I have a second, um, discussion? Uh, I would like the condition that, uh, when the water levels are lower. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Brian.
Thank you. She has one more application, I think, also. An after the fact application, I think, that's on the list.
It is, let me. Um, last application. Is for Jennifer Benner.
Well, actually.
Jennifer Benner, South Street, is this a new house?
I, I think Pam had a second application in for, uh, an after the fact. Thing, putting a deck on the back of her house.
Um, we can look through. I don't have that on the agenda. Um, did she?
I, I have, have John approve that, I mean, if it's a deck, it's really, let John approve that.
Yeah, I already looked at.
Have her, have her fill out, John, you need to have her fill out an inquiry form, though. You can't be approving things with no paperwork, we've been, we've gotten in trouble with that before. When, when, uh, what's her name was the wetland, forget her name now.
Mary.
Mary, how can I forget? Okay, um, so yeah, I mean, approving things without the paperwork doesn't work, so. You need to have her fill out an inquiry form, go look at it, and if you don't think it needs to come to the commission. Cause there's no potential impact, then let's not make a big deal out of it.
Roger that.
Alright.
Okay.
So we're, we'll move on to our good friend Jennifer Benner.
Russ, I need to, uh, recuse myself on this one, Jen's a friend of mine.
You have friends, Andy.
Isn't it amazing?
Yeah, I was glad I was sitting down for that one.
Ow!
Alright, where is this?
This is, um, hello, everyone, this is on South Street. Um.
Whereabouts, past Minor Bridge Road?
Yes.
Yeah, and there's a driveway that was kind of cut in a long time ago?
Yes, we, we would not be entering through that, um. From that lo- that spot.
That's it, if I'm going south, towards Southbury, and I stop at the sign on Minor Bridge Road, which some people need to learn to do. Um, and I keep going, it's on my right, like a lot or two down, right?
It'll be on your left if you're going south. Um.
It's on the left?
Yes.
You mean, there's a lot there? Wow, I didn't think there was another lot there.
I lucked out.
So if I'm heading towards Southbury, it's on my left. Um.
Do you know where Holmberg's is? On South Street?
I know that White House that's been there forever.
Yeah, that White House that's kind of on a corner, it's a, like, almost across the street from there.
Okay. Alright, so Jennifer, you're gonna build a home, I guess?
Gonna, yes, I hope so, so Brian F. has helped me with this plan, um.
You're lucky you got him.
I know, right?
The wanted man, I'll tell you.
Um, obviously, there is a, a, a water course that goes through, um, this property, but we are avoiding it. And, um.
Is it a water course or a lot of wetlands? No, I see the water course, okay, with wetlands surrounding it.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Alright, who wants to go look at this one? I'll go, cause I live up the street from you, Jennifer, it'd be good to have a good, nice neighbor.
I could go, it's right by me too.
Excellent.
Alright, me and Sue, wow, it's been a long time. Do you want to be there, Jennifer?
Uh, I don't need to be.
Alright, as long as you're okay with me, me and Sue tromping around in your woods.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Then we'll go to it by next meeting, as I said in the last application, state regulations don't allow us to, um, approve regulated activities at the first meeting.
Okay.
Uh, cause we have to go look, and anybody from the public could call for a public hearing, which never happens, but it's state law, so. But we'll go look, in the meantime, Brian, could you make sure that, uh, on South Street, it's staked so we know we're in the right place? And just stake the driveway and the four corners of the house?
I will.
So we, and the septic, so we could, we could walk our way around?
Yeah. I'll do that.
Alright. Um, Lenora, would you like to go with Sue?
Sure, thank you.
Sue, would you want to connect with, with Lenora, cause I'd like to get her, you know, more involved, I don't need to go.
Okay.
I, I got one with Rob, and John and Andy have a date, and, uh, so you and Lenora could have a date, and we're all happy, right?
Sure, that's no problem.
Okay, anything else on our agenda?
Uh, Andy, I just want to make it clear for our date, uh, it's Dutch.
Oh, man, I thought it was your turn to buy.
Hey, Jennifer, are you new to town?
No, I've lived here for about twenty years.
Oh, good, so you're not leaving us, good.
No.
Alright, that's great. And I do want to remind everybody, there's a select, first selectmen debate Thursday night at the high school at seven o'clock. It's just the first selectmen, me and Kim will not be debating, or, because we like each other too much, so we're not gonna debate, me and Kim. I, I say the women vote for me and the men vote for Kim, and we'll all be good, so. But there is a debate, and it's important that you go, so you, you see, um, if you, if you're interested in the next first selectmen after Barbara's great twenty-four years. Uh, the difference in the two, two candidates, okay? Is there anything else? Are we done, Julie?
You're done, you can adjourn when you're ready.
Well, despite Dennis McDonald, I, I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you all next month.
Thank you.
Bye. You.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.